Understandingly, unaware of what the issue was, it was normal for the security to invite the director of social due to our continuous student activities in the campus. I made myself available at the security office by 10:00 AM on 24th of May, but was surprised as they started to accuse me of disturbing the peace in the school. And I was forced to provide students planning for protest. My right to privacy as in session 37 of 1999 Constitution of Federal Republic of Nigeria was violated. I was forced to unlock my phone after they spent about 40 minutes assessing my contacts, my missing, my personal documents and any different numbers with my phone. My phone was seen and I was forced to write a statement with split instruction how they want it to be. And I was also forced to sign it. I was told to find the person planning for protest or I will be punished on this or that year. On 24th of May 2023, I made a call with the OC intelligence which were there for the distinguished, I don't know if I can read the voice call, it's just a minute's call.
What, please, thank you, sir.
The director of social of your university. Uh, I'm calling against the things I've been trying to get information. The information I've been trying to put into person, I have given you the details, the findings, the results, how I bring these off. Are you out there to bring them, bring them, are you there to, Professor Ayed, who's bringing them? And it's like, you're not able to do that, so I think so, you're not able to bring them. Hello, sir. The director of the OC intelligence, I'm in the game, so I'll be after this. Hello, I can hear you, sir. So what actually said to me, I would need anything?
No, 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 I'm my dad, my president, I'm to my dad and I saw that quite a bit, quite. It was around three something, I told him, yeah, but. So anyway, they have enough that before this, I was not going to do that. At the SUG, at the SUG, I think I was very, uh, uh, in the middle of the question. And you think that that of course, I think, certainly, talking to somebody that I was working, I don't know what that is. I don't know.
Thank you. Um, this was my conversation with the OC intelligence of the University of Abuja Security Unit. His name is Adamu Abubakar, Mr. Adamu Abubakar. So he told me that if I did not provide people planning for a protest, that I will be the one to be punished because of my WhatsApp message that goes on school. Despite the fact I showed them evidence that I'm not planning for a protest. And in the evidence I submit, the evidence five which is, and we can see the message I shoot to him. Despite that, I was T D ten. On Friday, being to insist May, I was also invited and not arrested at my entrance at the school security unit. And my phone was also seized. I was also invited alongside the SUG director of, eh, Mr. Sampson. And after hours of interrogation, we asked to fill another statement. And they forced us, the way they want us to write the statement and force us to sign it. And after that, after that, they made the resignation letter and forced us to sign it, which we deserve to sign. And we rejected the letters and they started to video us. One of the security officers on the video and they started beating us. If we did not sign this letter, we can leave this office. We stayed there till about 6:30 PM in the night. Out of my health condition, I have to sign my own letter so that they can flee me. Because that's why the fact I resist several parts from my family. Because I, after I spent my first experience on the Tuesday being 24th of May, my family member were afraid for me going back to school or the outcome of what they say will be. So they, they bugged me on bike and took me out of the school. There was one statement, the OC intelligence during that time. You see, you know that, um, you see, they never in your life that you should not return to University of Abuja. Whatever means so easy, if spotted that I will be arrested and if found around the school premises, that the punishment will be harsh and bitter on me and Mr. Sampson. So after that, he gave one of the security men instructions, Mr. Agu, to budge us out of the school on bike. After that, on getting home that night, after taking my dogs, I posted my resignation letter alongside my WhatsApp message on Twitter. After that, the end day, the school called me to the security officer that I should return the letter which they give me on or before Tuesday, 29th of May 2023. But I didn't return the letter because that was the only evidence I have. And at the same time, I'm outside of coming inside the school because I don't know what they will do to me if I enter the school after that day. And the message, the OC intelligence was the information he was passing through me and Mr. Sampson on Friday that day was. And upon that, with the letter they gave to us, which the last part of that on page 10, if on the evidence I submitted, I said, um, "Accordingly, you are banned from all university campuses pending the determination of the case." On the Sunday night being 28th of May, when I tried to log in to access my portal, I heard that my portal had been blocked and my academic record had been tampered with. So when I tried to log in, I couldn't access my portal. It was showing me, "And you are not an active student, leaving undergoing disciplinary process." And it was in page 11 of the evidence I submitted. On 15 June, I said an appeal to the council, University of Abuja, in conformity with session 19 of the University of Abuja Act of 1920, 1992. But up to now, I got no response from the council. Having exhausted all my internal meeting with rest, I was informed by my lawyer of two options, either to go to court or to appeal to the national assembly through my senator. I still believe that there was an internal solution because I love the University of Abuja and I have given it a lot to its development. I'm confident of this fact because of the numerous acquiescence I received by the university. In 2019, 2020 session, the vice chancellor issued me an award as the best behaved student in Information Management, Management Services Unit, one of the units in the university. And also in 2020, 2021 academic session, I was awarded a mentorship award for mentoring students in social science faculty. And in 2021, 2022 academic session, I won the best business idea in the University of Abuja, which qualified me to represent the university among the 16 universities in North Central Region, a national enterprise charity, which I go before the position. After waiting for months, I contacted my senator, distinguished senator B to make Bo Lefera, who requested my petition and after an interview, presented my case to the national assembly on the 23rd July 2023. Today, it has been 179 days since my unlawful accusation detention, I've been facing so many depression, mental challenges and fiscal problems. Being deviated from students as so many students don't even want to come close to me because they don't want to be minimized. I'm also here with Mr. Sampson, who also witnessed most of the thing that happened to me in the security office on, on Friday, being 25th of May 2023. I'm only request that the minister answer my prayers. And also, I want my full right as a student to be restored and my freedom of movement and also not to be scolded or threatened by anyone. Because since it, it says my intentional resignation, I have been sent out of school and I can't participate, my says about anyone for serving.
All right. I guess you just said your, your plea. All right, you want to say to the committee, ask your prayers. The committee is very patient to listen to you, for two reasons. You're an adult citizen, secondly, you may fit to seek repress without taking of conventional means of seeking repress, also committed for that. Um, let me listen to the University of Abuja and hear what they have to say. Before you start, you need to say properly and I want also, the committee also wants to know, um, who, who authorizes you to represent the university? If you have anything in writing, it can authorize you to represent the university, please, bring me forward.
Chairman of the committee, members of the committee, my name is Professor Aisha Sani Mekudi. I am the deputy vice chancellor academics of the University of Abuja. I'm here to represent my vice chancellor, Professor Abdya Shidna Allah, with me are the dean of student affairs, Dr. Kari, and our legal officer, the director of the legal unit, Dr. Makolo. Um, I have a letter of authority here. Aisha Sani Mekudi, deputy vice chancellor academics. Thank you. Um, sometime in November 2022, the council of the university, in accordance of the fact of the rising cost of services in the country as a whole, decided to set up a committee regarding the school service charges for students. This committee was set up and comprised of different people from different stakeholders of the university. Amongst members of the committee was the student union government. The president and the financial officer were both members of that committee. The committee held its meetings between November and finally submitted a report to the council in March 2023. Based on that report, the school charges, which he keeps saying school fees, we do not charge school fees, we charge service charges. The service charges were increased. These charges were increased with the knowledge of the student union body because they participated in it, in everything from beginning to end. After this, he is also a member of the student union body, the director of social. After this, he was not happy with it and so he created a group, evidence of which is here. He created a group and wrote, it's called SUGDOS update group. That is director of social, his group. He was posting inciting messages in that group regarding the school charges increase. He was the admin then, people in the group could not comment or submit anything that they wanted. He then added another person to the group and gave that person the right to submit a message to that group, which is this message that was posted. This was very insightful to us and to our, you know, to our students. So this, when this message was posted, it was signed by the secretary, the the president and the speaker of the SUG. The president and the speaker of the SUG could not comment in that group because they do not have admin rights, so they could not deny authorship of it. And they do deny authorship of this. So that means there was impersonation there. The SUG president and speaker petitioned the university security, the university security unit to investigate the matter because a letter that bears their signature, both of them their names, that was appropriately signed by them, is paying its insight and circulation within the university student community. So the, the security unit decided to do an investigation based on those petitions from these two individuals. During the course of the investigation, it was found that he admitted someone to that group, which he, which he created and that it was posted by someone from that group. Um, the university act, section 19 in particular, gives the vice chancellor the right to resuscitate a student independent investigation at the university disciplinary committee. So that was what happened. He was then resuscitated, it's just like a suspension. The staff can be suspended, the student is equivalent of a suspension pending the student disciplinary committee hearing. In the process, in the process of that, he appealed to several bodies and people and in particular, his national body, the NANS, the president came with a very powerful delegation and they met with the vice chancellor and other members of the university. Due to their pleas, the vice chancellor agreed to, um, withdraw that letter and have him come back to the university without setting up the disciplinary committee on the condition that he writes a letter of apology. Now, he was doing all this with influence from outsiders, which was acknowledged in this letter here. So he had influence from outsiders, he was influenced by them. Now, rather than receive this letter of apology from him so that he can come back, he did not do so. The next thing we received was a letter for disciplinary hearing from this distinguished committee. In addition, um, in addition, we thought that he complained about his academic record being tampered with, that is false. What was done is that his portal was blocked, which he mentioned later. But it's clear, it's a very important to clear this errors in communication. No academic record was tampered with, his portal was blocked because once you're suspended, you're not allowed to do anything within the university. And as such, your portal has to be blocked so that you do not have access to that. That is what was done. Please, one of it, the university, because he was supposed to be sent to the disciplinary committee, but his parent body came with a very powerful delegation, pleaded on his behalf. The university then agreed to withdraw this when he sends a letter of apology, but he didn't do that. So we're not happy with what is happening right now because it's like he has now gone against the agreement and come with this. But however, in reverence of the, you know, with the dignity that we look at you and the respect that we have for this committee, we're willing to listen to your recommendations and uphold that, thank you.
Professor, thank you so very much. I will refer it to my colleagues for what they have to say. Let me, again, thank all of you who are here for honoring my imitation. You are not, this is not a police force. But we are under the law, section 80, 8 or 86 of our constitution will tell you that we have section 88, gives us the power, unlike the constitution, to do what we're doing. Um, I will thank you for coming. For me, this is a very simple matter. It has resolved itself. Yes. For me, this issue has resolved itself. Unless there are other issues that hasn't been brought forward for us to, to, to hear. But if it is what it is, I think the issue has resolved itself. In any case, no, you have a time. In any case, um, I yield the mic to my colleagues. They will have one or two things to ask or to say. I have questions to ask, but I would mainly want to ask that question again. As I said, for me, what helped to resolve the matter is, is the next for us. But let me yield the mic to my colleagues who have one or two things to say. Send over mine.
Thank you, distinguished senator Neda, chairman of this very important public security committee. Uh, the students of Abuja and you are, welcome to this public hearing. My name is Senator Oluwembe Goife. I represent the people of Ambas and just districts. Um, the petitioner, who is welcome, hears from a community in my local government, um, my Sumatera district. So actually, this petition was led before the senate by myself because the petition came through me. Um, since we got this petition, we've been waiting for the time this committee will be in a position to look at it. Because, um, the storyline wasn't pleasing at all. A child comes to the university and spends four years and gets prosecuted for allegations contained, uh, in this presentation. Um, I found that to be too harsh on the students. And which I found out that his colleague was also affected. But while waiting for this committee, I'm not a member of the committee. I was invited because the petitioner came through me, I led the petition. That's why I'm here, to observe the public hearing. Um, from the reports I got and from what you were saying when I got him, you had asked him to write an apology and to, uh, possibly withdraw this petition. I don't know what you maybe you have for him because his meds have proceeded to the national service. He doesn't have his, um, letter showing that he has completed his studies. He has no access to the portal anymore. Yes. About community.
If, sorry.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I don't think it's necessary for my distinguished colleague to ask the university the question he is asking now, because the matter is already before this conference. And the focus of this committee sitting here is to find a solution that will be acceptable to the two parties. So if the university is going to answer in their committee, the remedy we already have, then there is no need for this sitting. So I, since you have led the petition, you have already given the committee this one. If they are calling you to come and, uh, witness or say anything because he is your host right, I think it would be very much appreciated. But I think let us not go through that hearing because we have questions we want to ask you. We have questions we want to ask the university so that at least you can strike a balance. Thank you.
Thank you, my, my dear colleague. I don't think I've overreached myself. I'm only explaining how I came about this and I will take my leave because I'm in another committee meeting. I'm only out of concern saying what I, as Senator Neda, who is representing this young man, would like done. I'm also telling that to the committee, you are in a position to reach your final decision. But I'm expressing my own concern as his representative. So maybe I've come here as a council, so to speak, but that's not the situation. What I'm only saying is that I'd like this matter to be resolved by a committee with you people. So that as somebody representing him, that brought this petition before him, we are not happy that he is not progressing with his meds. This is the only reason why the petition came here. So I came with the chairman of the committee. And the one that is concerned.
I mean, that, you do not have access. Yes. So how many everyone who has that, it's showing on the, so it's showing you are not an active student. Leaving, under which it's like you said.
No, okay. Once again, it was that I can't assess my portal and at the same time, so many people were saying that the portal had been tampered with, that my academic record was actually affected.
Yes. I want you to explain this group, because there are colleagues going, this is going to go out to the here, because you have brought this matter in part of public opinion. Yes, right? Do you, or do you think that you have one record of yours that you had an A in certain subjects that was canceled and written B or C or D or that your results moved from your academic record?
I can't, I can't do anything no matter what they're calling.
Yes, so if you cannot do anything, how can, how can, how can you conclude that your system was tampered with? If my understanding of different is what the professor would interpret, I'm not a professor, but that means I, I, I simply believe that it's all time.
Yeah.
Right? Yes.
This, uh, Tukwe Meka, uh, if you write, yes, uh, is and then it's all time to be feeling not that, yes, I understand that specifically of your references were checking to be some success of your business, your assignments, or what you gave up. So I want to, because it must have to be
...an undertaking to us by the university that A, you'll be taken back and won't hide. And B, that is safe. You'll not be harassed, you will not be intimidated by wine goes back. If we can agree on that, then I think we have a resolution. Let me go to my colleague here.
Thank you, Chair. Professor. If Mr. Tukwe Meka. After the basis, they're ready to take care of it. Unconditionally. Yes, why?
Um, distinguished senator, yes, we are.
Okay, that's fine. Mr. Tukwe Meka. This is the city. And you're a senator here. And us, if he is your senator, all of us, we are your senators. Also, we're centers of the university. This university, they set up to move future leaders. Move the characters of future leaders. You understand this? In our African tradition. Culture. Elders will not go wrong, even if they are wrong. If your elder decides to say you are wrong, it is. Apologizing. Only. A means of bringing about peace. Like the legislature, our constitution has captured that once the legislature says the president has committed an impeachable offense. Even if we accuse him of not entering the other room. It is an impeachable offense, it stands as an impeachable offense. Take him to come and say, I'm sorry for everything for you. You are going to, if you are a young man, you are going to have children. Sometimes you want to help them. College for something that you want them to be better in. If this university sees you should apologize. It's going to be good for Mr. Igwe, Tukwe Meka. It's going to be good for Senator Omen. It's going to be good for Anambra State, it's going to be good for Nigeria. For Igwe to apologize. The university has nothing to lose if you go out, nothing. You understand? But the fact of the matter is that remember that you are going to be a leader tomorrow. You are going to have children that you want them to grow up to be leaders tomorrow. So if the university finds that you have done something that requires an apology. Your mother body came to say this at the university because of their intervention, say, okay, apologize and come back. I think it's an opportunity to grab a two hands.
All right, I tell one more.
I would just like to make clear as well, he keeps saying resticated. That just means when you look at the English Oxford Dictionary, it means to suspend a student. So it's suspension because he was saying that he thinks we were asking for the letter back so that we can give him a letter of suspension. Resticated just means to suspend a student when you go and look at the English dictionary, Oxford Dictionary. Then, um, secondly, we had a prima facie evidence, um, a prima facie case of evidence, you know, against him. And that is why after the NANS came, we said, okay, fine, let him come back. He's our student and we love him, we love all of them. But we need, we give our institution certificates based on character and learning. Character comes first before even learning. So once of the prima facie evidence, um, case against you, we expect you to apologize before you can come back. Now, if he does that, I want to assure you that he has already finished, he has written his final examination. His portal is blocked, so he has no access to his results. Nothing, as he has already cleared, nothing has been tackled with in his academic record. So all that we have to do when he will receive his letter of apology is to open the portal for him so that he can access his results. And also NYSC, his colleagues are just leaving for NYSC now, they haven't left yet. We're getting that ready for them to go. So as such, nothing, you know, there's nothing happening to him now to say that he requires, that requires damages or anything of that sort. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So if, if, to understand it, if he brings you a letter of apologies today or say tomorrow. Uh, how soon do you have that?
If he brings it tomorrow, that same day that we receive it, we will act on it. It doesn't take long, but we need to have a letter of apology and you know, he's very adamant about saying he doesn't want to apologize. So we expect a proper letter of apology, please.
Well, Timon, Timon, I can, I can see, I can see the cornerstone of, of issue somehow, some words. I live in a region to the chairman, my commander. The young man has said, to my hearing, I said, apologize for what he did, for what he never did. And that's what he is saying. And but there's also a need to hear that, what do you lose? Because you are a young man, the future knows that before you, sometimes you took to conquer. But he also advised, I own a school, I'm, I'm, I'm a sporter, I'm a lawyer too. He has raised a very major issue here, that of fair hiring. Fair hiring is, is, is cagging now in a market like this. Because the issues of law are also involved in way particular. So as a merit, merit, it will be, you know, this is required and this affects all of us. As we continue our engagement, that should be very, very important for us. Because we know we are all here captain by that principle of fair hiring. We could be, we could be more than a part of the device the next day. So at all time, most always emphasize fair hiring. Young man, for the sake of your future, uh, and then by the, the, the school. Some measure of flexibility, they also, uh, be necessary. We don't need to stand on all fours, you know, some measure of one aspect and concern about the future. And because we've gone, we've over that, that age and we know how the problem was in our veins. Or maybe as, as the group goes that they come to terms more with the, with the name of the world as well. His future is very important to me and I'm, and I, and I know also to you as a mother, as, as a daddy, uh, as a, as a stewardess. So, but, but Timon, I think it will be a little wait to resolve this.
Um, distinguished senator, I would like to assure you that I'm also a professor of international law. I was also the deputy in of my faculty. And that is why I came here with a legal officer, he's the director of our legal unit. We do not take fair hiring or any legal issues lightly. I can assure you that our process is to suspend, once a prima facie case has been proven, you know, we have that, we suspend the student or the staff. We do not differentiate. Then you are sent to either the staff disciplinary committee or the student disciplinary committee. He was supposed to be sent to the student disciplinary committee when his parents body decided to intervene on his behalf. And because of that intervention, the university, the vice chancellor decided to allow him to come back. If, you know, with, um, on the condition that he writes a letter of apology. As such, he was never denied any fair hiring, thank you.
All right, I think we should raise this matter now because we have other issues before us. Or perhaps like. We've agreed on what I had said earlier. That you write a letter of apology and you said as soon as you get it, the portal will open its back to us. And I'm also happy to hear that he will not even miss his NYSC. He's completed studies and nothing is actually lost. So, um, I'm happy to hear that and please, uh, watch our young man to please, um, as soon as you write this letter of apology. Let us know. So that we can begin to look at when your portal was opened to you. All right, once we write that letter of apologies, you know, I have written, write it to them and get a letter of, um, of acknowledgement, acknowledgement that you received it, dated, and they will know when they received it. All right, I think, um, that should be for this matter and, uh, thank you all for coming. This matter is closed.
Hi, Vice President Godwin, I'm Oms. Do solemnly affirm that the evidence I shall give before this thing is coming to you. Shining their throats, the whole throats, and nothing but the truth. So I beg your pardon.
I, Major Peace Obeen. Do solemnly, do solemnly affirm that the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So I beg your pardon.
Mister, it came. Tukwe Meka. And Mister, it came from the.
It came from this.
From this. And what, what's the relationship between them?
I am the secretary. To be legal advisor to the case of Sod. I want to co-signate this petition.
Who is the young officer?
These are two of the surviving victims of the attack. Who may ask some questions.
Is there anything else in the writing to add to this matter?
The petition is, I signed the petition.
You signed the petition?
Yes, Vice President Godwin, I'm one of the co-signators. Four of us signed the petition.
You have asked Mister who?
Godwin Oms.
Okay, that's.
Godwin, I am a senior.
You have to say.
Yes.
All right, that's fine. May we hear you, that one here and what's the one? Yes.
Mister Chairman, sir. We, from the military, we have a challenge. We will have properly served. We will only serve it. What we have been a petition for, that is why we are here. We talk about.
I just.
Did you say you see the notice to appear there?
Yes, sir. Only this.
No, you see, the, I just declared, declared, when, when we send out an invitation. Like the type you are showing us now, is normally accompanied with the petition yourself. So cannot just send you, uh, a letter of invitation and not letting you know why we want you to appear before the committee. So I'm at loss, I'm actually at loss to hear from you that you don't have a copy of the petition.
Unfortunately, sir. Unfortunately, sir, anything can happen. We cannot permit a staff line. We, it is human being, we can make mistake.
Who, who can make mistake?
Anybody can make mistake, that's what I'm saying. Yes, sir.
I'm not going to believe, I'm not going to believe about this. If you say you didn't receive the petition, it's within your right to receive the petition. We're going to do, we're going to serve the petition now, now, we're going to serve it what? And we're going to step it down from the beginning.
We, we talk to respect, sir. We talk to respect. I'll be constrained to express myself in respect of this petition, sir. The, there is this channel of communication that we have that, uh, we don't have right to receive petition on behalf of.
Let, let, let me observe now. Right, say, Major, come now. Major, sir, Major. Yes, see, this is the committee of the Senate. I don't know how seriously you take it, but I need you to take us very seriously. All right? There's not a number, I really need you to take us seriously. We, we have other things going, all right? We have other things going. If you look at the time, it's almost 5 o'clock. We have had a minute of today, we'll be in other committees. And this is a very, very important committee of the Senate. For to deal with the rights and privileges of citizens of this country. I expressed my concern, I said, there is no way that you will be served a notice of hearing without petitions, it doesn't happen. But I just gave that benefit of doubt that yes, you didn't receive it. I don't believe it, but I don't want to say so publicly. You are making me say so now. I want to respect your right as a major. Please, we will serve you the petition now. If you like, take it through whatever channel you want to take it through. And tell your, your, your superiors that this is what happened. Because if you are expecting us to let you go now and then go through the same channel and you told again that you didn't receive it, then many full of all of us. We are going to stand for it. Because I can tell you that the committee clerk invited you, we encabled the petition. You didn't receive it, that's fine. Like you said, anyone can make a mistake. We want to correct that mistake now by serving you directly. Clerk, do you have a copy of, of the petition? Oh, the second letter, right? You hear that? So I don't want to go through all of that. Bring me another copy and hand it up to him now. In presence of the camera and the presence of the committee members. We're going to hand you over a copy of the petition and, and let's hear what you want to tell us the next time you are there. Clerk, please hand me by the copy of the petition.
Mister Chairman, we have seen off, sir, from the liaison officer. He's the ones sitting beside me. He's the proper person to receive the process on behalf of.
She doesn't matter to me, you are all uniform. You don't have a liaison officer? Does, I know. So let, let me be, sorry, let me be recorded, hold it. Let it be recorded. Don't worry about that conundrum. Let it be recorded today that before the committee. Of the Senate. Ethics, privileges and public petition, that we have handed over to Major, what's her name? Call her Obuti. O A, Obuti. Which of the, um, which of the, um, division are you from? Start again.
Defense Nazid Office, national assembly side.
Ah, you have to hear.
Yes, sir.
Defense is on. Office of Nas. That our petition, that they claim they have not received has been served again on the table. And we hope that in this hearing, um, you will prepare to, um, to appear before the committee. Thank you. Um, Mister. Godwin Oms. Mister Godwin, I'm sorry, that was to bring you here again. And how, how to go back without the resolution to the matter, but we need to do this so that everybody can, we talked about fair hearing. That's exactly where we are going. They need, they need to be heard, they need to have opportunity to know why they are here. And if they say they don't have that opportunity, we have afforded them that opportunity. And hopefully, if one next will bite you and that, we will to forward that matter.
Listen, we, listen, can we just?
Yes.
Listen, I want to thank the Senate for this opportunity. And I fully align myself with the position of the chairman of the committee that they are entitled to fair hearing. It's just that we don't, we don't know when next, eh, the hearing will. We come from Enugu, we come from Enugu.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, sir, we are appealing that in adjoining this case, the committee should consider the fact that the unit where this incident happened is Enugu. And if, since we are inside, we will write to Enugu for their comment in respect of what transpired to enable us write a response to this committee. So, and it will take a longer time in doing that. That's why we are appealing to this committee to take cognizance of that, in adjoining this case.
Let, let me, let me say this. You see, this is, this is what I, this is what I said before, and I hate to repeat myself in this same direction. We are not, we are serious. We are very serious, this is, this is a very serious committee. So if, if you were properly served today, as soon as you were properly served today, you would have sat there to tell us that you don't know what happened? Because we are not, we are not. Is that what you would have told us? That is what you are telling us now. We don't want Enugu to write you to tell us what to tell us, no matter how you say. Want Enugu to come, to come and answer the petition. If you have not the intention to answer the petition, you have no intention to come. So if you have come today to take a date, you succeed in doing that, and that's good. But on the issue itself, if you have no intention to speak to it, please don't offer yourself. Let Nigeria, I mean, Enugu, that was involved in this incident we are talking about, come. Come, they are the one that can tell us exactly what happened. All right? So I understand this. Okay, now. The, we have, today we have seen the notice from you that this is important. And in line with that rules and procedures, any matter that before the court, we suggest to us, we will touch it. And so for that reason, we will, we will not take this case. But if and when the case is withdrawn by anyone, and so it's still not very important, then we will have to move out to another term. But for now, we will not take this case, but our responsibility, thank you. But for now, we will not take this case for that reason, thank you.
Well, also, that is.
Look, look, this is. The next case is, is in a negative, a deep, fast, Nigerian. Thank you. Optimus.
Petition, sir.
That's ready.
Please, this is a nervous. First, I think. I think I'm tired.
It's not see.
Eh?
Which one? Nigerian, Nigerian Royal Corporation, right?
Yes, yes.
I, of course, we are, we are very happy that you came for our invitation. And this matter, but unfortunately, um, petition and engineer Nigeria, Paddy Ugbay is not here. And that's how we should proceed with the petition opening this case and telling us exactly what it wants. Uh, for the response thereafter. So, um, we are constrained, we have no other choice now but to set this matter down. Until we hear from the petitioner why he's not here, maybe he's abandoned this case, we don't know, but.
We're here, huh?
That's it, that's it, we don't know. So, uh, soon as we hear from him, who, who, through the clerk of the committee, will go back to you again to let you know exactly when the next sentence will be. So please indulge us on this. All right? Thank you. So this matter will step down while they are hearing, when we have, um, heard from the, from the petitioner, and I step down. Okay, join my team. So, uh, this, this city is a job. This city is a no-sister. Thank you.